Ladies and gentlemen, it is 3 o'clock in the afternoon on Wednesday, March 10th. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled City Commission meeting to order. It's great to see everybody. Thank you for joining us in person or virtually. At this time, it is my honor to invite Pastor A.J. Miller of Fellowship Presbyterian Church and his son to come and provide the invocation. Pastor, thank you for joining us.
Let us pray. Uniting God on Monday, faith leaders, elected officials, and members of our community, join together in a day of prayer and fasting to refocus ourselves on you and our love for this city and our neighbors. We prayed for unity, compassion, and love to reign over all of our divisions so that we might be brought together under what is right and good for the furthering of your kingdom here in Tallahassee. God of abundance, this day I pray that we begin to see the new growth that will spring forth from these prayers as our elected officials make decisions regarding the present and future of our city. I pray for the improvement of our community, not only in its outward appearance, but in how we care for every person that calls this place home as a tourist or is just passing through. Grant us radical empathy, gracious God, that we may see those who are not like us with your eyes and know that they are beloved and worthy. Remind us, creating God, that the decisions our officials make today do not only affect our present community, but have the ability to echo down to the next generation and our broader ecosystem. Fill us with your Easter hope, that love will reign in this land, that we will be good stewards of the resources you have entrusted to our care, and that we might provide grace and refuge to all. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, the flag is to my right, your left, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor, thank you so much. We certainly appreciate you coming and providing the invocation. All right, colleagues, we do not have a public hearing this evening, and we will just move through the agenda. So, Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, no agenda modifications.
Do we have any presentations for today?
No, sir, no presentations.
Do we have any formal announcements today?
No announcements.
Okay, do we have any appearances by other appointed boards, committees, or other governments?
No, sir.
We are on citizen input on agenda items. Mr. Clerk, good to see you, sir. If you'll walk us through citizen input.
Yes, sir, Mayor, we will have citizen input from both individuals in person and connected virtually. We do have speakers on agenda topics as well as un-agenda items. People speaking on un-agenda items we will hear from at the end of the meeting. Those who are speaking on items listed on the agenda will speak at this time. We will begin with the people who are here in chambers, and then I believe we have one speaker connected virtually that we will go to after we complete those who are here. Our first speaker is Stanley Sims. He will be speaking on item 9.03. 9.03 is the revisions to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee bylaws. He and the others who speak will have three minutes each. I'll give you a heads up at 2:30.
Excellent. Mr. Sims, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm at 1320 Avondale Way, Tallahassee, Florida. Glad to be here. Um, Mayor, I'm kind of bootlegging a little bit. I, um, attended the development plan, and it does tie in in reference to the CityWalk situation. And it's, it's two things that I brought to their attention that I would like to also bring to your attention when you are considering any housing issue, especially when you're tagging this word "affordable." That may be boxing us in. And when I say boxing us in, if we're thinking big, bold, and out of the box, we also need to be thinking also in the terms of maybe some transitional housing, um, some other type models of housing that will slowly transition our homeless population of this. Because here is what is quite evident, is that even if we built a house for everyone right now, there are some other mitigating challenges that surround this particular population in order to move them forward. So, um, I just wanted to say that. Also, we need diversity on these boards. We like diversity on these boards. If we're all in and we're all open, then it, these boards should reflect where I'm at. I'm good?
You got, you're at a minute and a half. You've got more time than usual.
This is the new outfit. Came from a minority designer out of Atlanta who I'm trying to recruit to come to Tallahassee. Just throwing him a little plug. But, but Mayor, that's what we're really, we're really thinking out of the box. But we respect a fair process for everyone, a fair, transparent process for everyone. And so, um, I'm optimistic, Commissioner Niema, that this is not a dead end. I know everybody is not happy, but I think that it, it generated a needed conversation. And so, um, I'm more than willing to be a part of that conversation. But as you choose these boards and looking at these bylaws, we may want to redetermine what is affordable housing.
Now you're at 20 seconds.
And guess what? I'm finished.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have to ask them to send me another one of these outfits, Mayor. It does something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker on agenda items.
Next speaker is Rachel Robinson on the same item 9.03.
Ms. Robinson, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Rachel Robinson. Um, I'm gonna try to concise this, but it is 3 minutes and 30 seconds. I'm gonna try to speak as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Um, so I've introduced myself. I'm, I'm an independent voter seeking a bipartisan-supported solution to our homeless population. I want to remind the city commissioners of the redevelopment effort of Orange Avenue Apartments set to possibly break ground this year. It's essentially a Section 8 housing on a 100-year to 500-year floodplain. There is both an obligation to maintain the housing while also preserving the wetland. I do not believe the city should invest millions of dollars to replace and rebuild the property we know was created in 1971. It hasn't even lasted 50 years. So unless we choose and allow better location like southeast Capitol Circle, um, it's, it's doomed to fail, and we're gonna be doing this again in 50 years. What's, what's another best route in comparison to millions every 50 years? Another proposal of mine to help minimize and potentially eliminate most of our homeless population is to help lower the cost of living for our fellow working class by not constantly increasing the property tax, to find funds for issues we can solve by lowering the property tax in some way. I propose incentivizing the stagnation of rental rates. Why wouldn't people constantly raise the cost of rent when they're being penalized to create more homeless population help and reduce the debts they're not fully responsible for? At this rate of increasing the property taxes, we're on track to become another California, scrambling to create empty parking lots where people can safely park their car at night to sleep in without fear of crime. We must incentivize and allow the stagnation of rental rates, not only to avoid inflation in the coming years as the minimum wage comes up to a livable wage, but also to keep money in the working class's pockets so they can contribute to our sales tax. Currently, the average rental weight, rent, rental rate is 60% of the minimum wage worker's monthly income without any federal or state tax taken or any other living cost included for that matter. Increasing property tax will continue to perpetuate a problem that leads to more problems like students needing school lunch paid for, free Wi-Fi, et cetera. We've seen with the COVID-19 pandemic and stimulus strikes that putting more money, oh, I'm so nervous, I'm sorry, into the working class's hands greatly stimulates our economy. We need to save our economy before it's too late. Not only should we incentivize the stagnation of rental rates, but we should also incentivize the renovation of rental property in order to encourage the overall improvement of the quality of living in Tallahassee by those who can afford it. No one wants to fix up a property they know will be destroyed for free unless they know there's a way that could be praised rather than compound penalized with increasing tax rates.
You're at 30 seconds.
As of now, no one gets a tax incentive unless their building has been through a storm or natural disaster. We can change this and encourage overall improvement of the quality of life for both property owners and renters alike. With the minimum wage increases every year, we've suddenly put the richest people's money back into the working class pockets and stimulated our economy. Can we please work together to find a bipartisan solution to this problem while we're embudding times of minimum wage increase? If we stop these rental rates now and encourage renovations with tax exemptions for rental properties, we can avoid stagnation or worsening of our economy. Please seriously consider and mention this in the meeting with the county commissioners. My proposal is to stimulate our economy before it's too late.
You're at 3 minutes.
As someone who has had to fight the struggle of homelessness, I know the biggest struggle is not finding a job, but affordable housing. With the tax rates at hand now, you all will perpetuate a problem and potentially put me back into homelessness if we can't make this minimum wage increase work without increasing property taxes. Have faith in the people to put their money into small businesses when they have the money to spend.
That's 3 and 1/2, ma'am.
Go ahead, go ahead and finish. You're, you're about to wrap up. Go ahead, please.
Thank you again for your consideration. I hope that you consider and really sincerely put this towards your efforts.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next is Whitfield Leland, speaking on item 9.02, the approval of the sale of Del Rio Apartments.
Mr. Leland, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Whitfield Leland, 754 West 7th Avenue, Tallahassee, Florida. As I was reading this agenda item, I'm not against it. The apartment complexes are in bad shape, but in this apartment complex, we have residents that's, that live there now. And my, my concern is, if we do this, what happens to those residents? Those residents move out. If they, if they have to move out, then that means some, they're gonna go and pay a higher rent that they may not be able to afford. So I see if it was abandoned, but it's not abandoned. It's current. So what are we gonna do with those current residents? I, I feel like when we swoop in and, and redo stuff like this, we displace people, not intentionally, but unintentionally, and those people kind of get swept up under the rug. The second thing I would like to talk, I want to ask, um, I reached out to a couple commissioners about CityWalk. I understand that the process may have been wrong, but what I'm here, if, from what I see in CityWalk, when I go visit, when I go out there, is something that we need. Um, it touches on reentry, it touches on transitional housing, and it touches on homelessness. And it is not necessarily as crazy as everybody say. So my question is to y'all, how, what is the right process? Like, the city, I, I feel like the city should be even trying to collaborate or give instructions to CityWalk on how to make this a part of our community than just saying, okay, well, we ain't gonna do it, this, that, that, the community versus them. And at the end of the day, let's think, let's be honest, if they leave there, CityWalk gonna still be there because it's a church. Only thing they can't do is house. So at 9 o'clock at night, when they have to kick all those people out, where y'all think those people going? In the backyard to these same people that don't want the church there. So it would make more sense to let's house them there than instead of kick them out at 9 o'clock and then they, and everybody y'all, and then first thing y'all gonna, first thing gonna happen, police gonna get called, the crime, the, the situation's gonna go up. So my thing is, we throwing fire on fire. But at the end of the day, I think that as a city, and to be totally honest with you, CityWalk program is better than the current center. The opportunities at CityWalk is better than the current center, and we put money in the current center, and we don't fund them at all. So at the end of the day, all I'm asking is that we meet somewhere in the middle. Everybody's gonna be upset. We see that, and, and both sides mad. So our leaders need to merge us together where we can come up with a comprehensive, a comprehensive plan and a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is connected via WebEx. That will be Stephen Martin. I don't have any other speakers on agenda items here in chambers, uh, but if somebody else does want to speak, uh, they can get a speaker card downstairs and we'll.
We'll do the un-agenda items after business.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Mr. Martin, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Okay, Stephen Martin, 2625 Stonegate Drive. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I'm speaking in part due to comments made at your last meeting by a resident Canopy homeowner, as well as comments that have been made by residents of other neighborhoods who care about their backyards. At last meeting, this Canopy homeowner commented about activities that are near her residence. In particular, she mentioned a loud entertainment center that's there now and a proposed go-kart track. She commented as well that the community development district representative, Tom Asbury, whom I guess was in your chambers at the time, doesn't seem concerned about her issues and that impacted residential parties have little say on what goes on in their backyards in Canopy Development. Well, this development has a history of downplaying or ignoring public input. For example, in 2010, the name of the development was changed from Wallani PUD to Canopy PUD immediately prior to posting of announcements at the public hearings. Why was that done? To make it less likely that potential parties who would have spoken out about it looking for Wallani PUD weren't looking for Canopy PUD and announcements. So that was an effort to kind of cover it up and prevent people who were likely to speak out about it at the public hearings. It's also no secret, Canopy has impacted this area well beyond its borders. What was here before is no more. The pre-existing character of this area has disappeared. These developers have shown little concern for the character of this area. They've shown little concern for the surrounding neighborhoods or residents within Canopy, at least according to this lady who spoke at your meeting. These developers have a record of neglecting surrounding neighborhoods beyond their operations, including Woodhaven, Summerbrook, Oxbottom, and Moore Pond, just to name a few. So often, what they've done is totally out of character, is incompatible with what was already there.
You're at 2 and 1/2 minutes.
Okay. NIMBYism is alive and well in Tallahassee, which I believe is good for Tallahassee. People care especially about where they live, their home, the one place where they should be able to get away from it all. Some downplay, discredit, or ridicule NIMBYism, including developers and unfortunately planning departments and other key decision-makers. Decision-making processes which downplay or ignore public input, don't serve the public, are in sore need of revision.
You're at 3 minutes.
Input from, oh, I'm almost done. Input from parties that are expected to be impacted by developments should be sought from the outset, especially from the parties who are most likely to be adversely impacted and would express opposition. Parties, developers, and proponents of development would least like to be heard from. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Clerk, that does it for agenda items, correct?
Yes, sir. Jack Fox Keen had registered to speak virtually, but at the time we began our meeting, had not connected, and I do not see, uh, the name on the board, so.
We'll come back to him at the end as well to see if he would like to participate.
Very good.
Excellent. We're on the consent agenda item. Mr. Manager, have any items been pulled off of consent?
Mr., Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Commissioner Porter.
I was wondering if I could pull 902 just for some questions.
902 has been pulled off consent. We'll take care of the rest of the consent agenda, and then we will come to 902.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not aware of any other items that have been pulled.
Okay.
Who's consent?
Consent's been properly moved by the mayor pro temp. Is there a second to the motion? It's been seconded by Commissioner Porter. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. 9.02, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask, uh, Bennet Ojatow, our, uh, Director of Housing and Community Resilience, to join us. She's via WebEx. Uh, this particular item is seeking approval of the City Commission to approve the sale of the Del Rio Apartments to FLM Yeager LLC. Uh, the city has a position on this, uh, particular property as it has loaned money to the property and, and some time ago, and in order to facilitate the sale, the city would have to, um, authorize it. So we would do so with your approval in a restructured agreement that would result in a forgivable loan of the new owner for approximately $300,000. Uh, Bennet, can you add a few more details to, um, the conditions that may be required if, if approved by the City Commission?
Sure. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners, um, and thank you, City Manager. I think you gave a, an excellent summary of it. This project, um, the, the city became involved in this project several years ago, and so uh, the terms of the current contract would have, um, the project eligible for resale or for the loan to be repaid, um, uh, by 2023. And that's also coincident with the affordability period. The terms of the agreement require that the city authorize any sale, and so the conversation was triggered with the request, uh, by the owner to, uh, sell the property. And, uh, while they've had some challenges finding a buyer, one has, one prospective buyer has stepped, oof, one prospective buyer has stepped forward. Uh, they're asking for, um, the authorization for us to, uh, allow the sale, but also to allow them to extend the term of the repayment. And so we see that this is an opportunity in, in conversation, of course, with our city attorney's office as well, we see that this is an opportunity to extend the affordability period, which would have ended in 2023. Instead, this would extend it for 10 more years. Um, it would also allow the buyer to apply their, um, the amount to renovation if needed rather than having to repay the entire loan upfront. Um, so the terms are attached in, in the attachments to the agenda item. Um, I don't know yet if we have the prospective buyer in the audience. We did alert them that they would be on standby. Um, I would not be able to comment on, um, specifically their, uh, plans in the immediate future. I do know that they intend to, um, own and operate the property. Uh, they have others in town. They do intend to, uh, increase the number of, um, tenants. They've had some vacancies, and so they would be looking to, uh, repair and rehab the unit so that they can attract more, um, tenants. And they do intend to keep the affordability period, um, or the, the rates as affordable, uh, to 80% AMI and below. And in fact, most of their tenants are around 50 to 30% AMI, so they would want to maintain that level of, um, that accessibility and affordability for tenants in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter, you pulled the item. I'll come back to you.
Thank you. I just really have one question. Do we, you know, a comment was raised from a member of the public, whether the current residents will be, if we know whether they will be displaced either during or because of renovations or just as a matter of changing, um, the ownership and management structure.
Um, I, I won't be able to speak precisely on behalf of the owner, but that's something we can verify, but my understanding is that there might be a mix of renovations that need to happen, and they may not be extensive enough to require a complete move out. Um, usually if there is, there's some kind of arrangement or agreement with the tenant as far as where they would return. Uh, there was a similar project in that same corridor that received some, um, Housing Finance Authority funding, and I think they did the rehab and renovations in rotation. And so as units, uh, were vacant, they would be renovated first. A tenant will have the option of moving there, and then as units are available, they would renovate that. Um, so if we have an opportunity to, um, provide the feedback, we would recommend something similar for this project as well.
Okay. I mean, that, cause that's just my concern, especially since we are forgiving the loan essentially. I would really hope that in doing this, we wouldn't be displacing people without, you know, permanently or even temporarily without some kind of accommodation. So if we can follow up on that and get a definitive answer, I would feel more comfortable.
Mayor, Commissioners, we'd be happy to follow up on that and, and provide an email update to the Commission.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. Would you like to move the item, Commissioner?
Sure, I'll move to accept.
All right. Staff recommendation's been properly moved by Commissioner Porter. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number, uh, 11.01. Uh, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 11.01, I'm sorry, um, item 11.01 is, uh, addition of a member to the Audit Committee for the City of Tallahassee, had a vacancy. Uh, the city auditor, uh, recommends, uh, the, the named replacement.
Opening it up for discussion?
Move of acceptance.
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox. Staff recommendation for Ms. Carol Sunny Phillips to be appointed, uh, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Do we have any ordinances to be introduced tonight, Madam Attorney? We're on policy formation and direction, 13.01. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We're certainly, uh, pleased to bring you this item tonight. Uh, it seeks your approval of two bargaining agreements for our firefighters, um, that are represented by the International Association of Firefighters, uh, both the firefighter ranks and the supervisor ranks. Uh, as you know, this has been, um, uh, something of focus and priority, and I'm really glad that we've been able to reach a, what I believe is an excellent agreement. It reflects our current financial state, but also understands the need to properly compensate our firefighters and, uh, first responders, and it does just that with the three-year agreement. The firefighters have voted on it as required. They have ratified it from their point of view, and so this will be the final step in the process. Let me ask, uh, if you don't mind, Raoul Lavine, who has been our lead negotiator from the staff's point of view, um, you know, these are always tough because they're contracts, but, but I'd like to recognize Raoul for his good work and ask him to share the details of, of the final agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Good to see you.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, uh, as you will recall, on February 17th, we brought to you a tentative agreement at the executive session that ultimately was presented to the union membership and approved, uh, approved on March 1st. Uh, so some of the details of the agreement are the agenda item, but I'll, I'll talk briefly about some of the main ones. There is a pension reduction, uh, for firefighters on average of 3%. So their contribution towards the pension plan will be reduced on average of 3%. Uh, in years two and three, uh, firefighters in the unit will receive a 4% step progression. In addition to that, there is a half percent ATB and across the board in year two and a .25% across the board in year three. And then the firefighter ranks, which is one of the things that the union was trying to address, will receive a 1% ATB in year three. In addition to that, we, uh, included a $500 supplement, cash supplement, in years, um, one, two, and three, and this is for the firefighters to use to help offset some, um, health insurance, any other insurance packages that they may have. And then there's also some other minor reductions, uh, that we adjust, um, for some, um, allowances that they get and some benefits that they get, and those are minor and they're detailed in the agenda item. Uh, we think this is a, a, a good package. It's within the parameters that you approved in September, uh, and as the manager said, it'll take us through, uh, three years.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Raoul. Let me also recognize, uh, Mr. Davis, who's the president of the, uh, union, for his, uh, work in his day job as, as, uh, one of our first responders, but also the, his leadership with the union.
Mr. Davis, thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much. It has been a long year for a lot of reasons, but, uh, on top of that, we've been negotiating for, for a year now, and, uh, I know each of you have heard from me multiple times, and, um, although this was a difficult negotiation, we've come to the end of it, we've, we've reached, uh, something that we can be proud of, both from our standpoint and from the city's standpoint. I'd like to thank you for, um, being willing to come back to the table and, and work to further address some of our concerns. You have our commitment that as a part of Tallahassee, we're here to serve admirably and, uh, because we love our job and we love our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Closing comments, Mr. Manager?
No, no, sir. That's all. Thank you.
I'll start off by saying I think, uh, uh, we've all worked hard on this contract. It's a great contract. The union has agreed to the contract. Joey, thank you so much for your leadership and, uh, willingness to continue working. Mr. Manager, Raoul, and to the team, great job as well for keeping. Mr. Manager, Raul, and to the team, great job as well for keeping in there and like Mr. Davis said, I think this is a contract we can all be proud of. Really, this is just the formal ratification, we've actually already voted unanimously in favor of it, but this is the final step. So Commissioner Williams Cox, comment? Commissioner Richardson, comment?
Commissioner Richardson was first.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to say, Joey, we thank you all for the service that you provide to this great city of ours. You know, it's interesting, where I live, off of Orange Avenue, I hear the fire trucks going by like you wouldn't believe. So apparently, there are lots of calls of service, but whenever those calls come in, you all are there, Johnny on the spot, providing service. If it's a health issue, if it's a fire issue, you're there. And certainly want to thank you for what you've done to help the Health Department to provide vaccinations for our citizens in the midst of this pandemic, so I want to thank you all for all of that. I want to say that from the very beginning, I certainly can't speak for everybody here on the Commission, but I can certainly say that I supported doing what we could do to show our thanks to our firefighters. We all unanimously voted, I think maybe twice, to go to impasse, but each time that we did, we encouraged the City Manager and the bargaining team to continue with negotiations. And that's how the bargaining process works. It's a give and take and it's a process that's outlined and we followed that process. There was give and take and eventually we came to a contract that of course your membership could agree on and certainly we will, I think, follow suit here this afternoon. Certainly, I, as an individual Commissioner, will support the current contract because you all have certainly indicated that it's something that you can live with. So we look forward to moving forward, continuing as a family here in the city of Tallahassee and you all being an integral part of that family for the service that you provide. And so we look forward to working with you all going forward, but thank you for all that you do. And if you would pass that on to your coworkers and let them know how much we appreciate what they do as well for the city.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion?
Yes.
And I'll second that.
Commissioner Richardson has made the motion ceremoniously, I think we all second the motion. Commissioner Williams Cox and then Commissioner Porter, then the Mayor Pro Tem.
I just wanted to say to the family, because that's what we are, the city of Tallahassee, our residents, we are family. We don't always agree, but what I like about it is that we don't stop talking until we do agree. And so this was the first time I've been through negotiations like this. I think that the fact that we're here today united and working for the residents of our city, not that, you know, you stopped working, but we did what we, as Commissioner Richardson said, we did what we could. And just know that, you know, when I look at the city of Tallahassee, I look at general employees, I look at firefighters, and I look at the other union unit. And just to try to make sure that we are doing the best we can for everybody, because everybody works very, very hard. And so I am, thank you to Raul and the team and thank you, Joey. And I learned, you know, meeting you Joey, we had an opportunity to chat and we got some things in common, you know, we're both from Gaston County, so homeboy.
Robert F Monroe.
So at any rate, it was good, it was good getting to know you and please let everyone know that we are very appreciative of the work that you do and professionalism that you display in doing that work. And so, and when I call the fire department, y'all come now, okay? Thank you.
Commissioner Porter.
I'll second that, just thank you for the work that you do and to all of our firefighters and thank you especially for those who are members of the E-Board for, you know, that's for standing up for working people and I appreciate it and I'm glad that we've reached this agreement.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I just want to thank the City Manager and his team for rolling up their sleeves and getting this done. I think, you know, last year we said, we need you to look out for the fiscal health of our government, we need you to take care of our firefighters and here's a pandemic as well, you know, have fun and figure it out. And it's not easy, it's hard to make these decisions and find these balance, it can take longer than it's supposed to, but at the end of the day, you know, you and your team were able to navigate the challenges and deliver a plan that I think we could all be proud of, so I want to thank you, Raul and your staff for your efforts. I want to thank, you know, Joey and your team for all you do for the firefighters, we appreciate your leadership and everybody in the department who shows up for us every day. I did want to highlight a fact that an initiative the mayor took last year was to make sure men and women got paid parental leave and we did incorporate that in this agreement as well. And I know, I don't think it's written for the negotiating period, but Mr. Manager, I believe that is covered, right?
Yes, sir, Commissioner, I can confirm that the parental leave benefit that was extended by way of the contract will also be applied for some individuals that took that time off since October 1. I believe that's being executed through MOU. I'm going to look to Mr. Lavin just to confirm my understanding, just the method of how it's executed.
The union and the city agreed to draft up an MOU for the seven individuals that are going to be covered and so we're in the process of finalizing that and getting that signed.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I just want to let all the firefighters know, if you had a baby during negotiations, you'll still be covered and, you know, thank the mayor for his leadership on that initial effort. It's a great benefit to our employees and I'm proud we can offer it, thank you.
Seeing no further comment, all those in favor of Commissioner Richardson's motion for approval of the contract, seconded by all of us. If you need a name for the second though, Commissioner Williams Cox was the one that got my attention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you. We are now moving on to item number 13.02, Mr. City Manager.
Sir, this item is related to our recycling services, our processor. As you well know, we use a local processor to gather the recyclable material that we collect at the curb and in various places in our community and make it ready for market. That provider is Marpan. In December of this last year, you directed us to negotiate, renegotiate if you will, revise a new contract with Marpan based on the dynamics and change of the global recycling market. We have now done that, staff has successfully negotiated a contract that would implement a processing fee, so we would pay Marpan to process the material. And then in return, there would be a sharing agreement for the revenue of that material that it generates, so there would be a split between the city and Marpan. This contract would begin October of this year, so it's a prospective contract, it would last for five years and have two additional five-year terms if agreeable to both parties. Staff recommends your approval of this contract. Reginald O'Fahney is our lead on this, he's our General Manager of Community Beautification and Waste Management, I believe he is with us via WebEx if you have any questions.
Thank you. Opening it up for discussion?
Move staff recommendation, option one.
Second.
Mayor. Commissioner Richardson has properly moved staff recommendation for option number one, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously, five zero. 13.03, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. On this item, we're seeking your approval of an RFP selection committee's recommendation for an award related to the Greater Bond Neighborhood Residential Facade Improvement Program. The recommended vendors are the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium, Florida Developers, and Graceful Solutions. I'll tee this up a little more, then I'm going to ask our Parks and Recreation Director, Ashley Edwards, to talk about how the program will work. I think it's important that we share all those details, but this is an extension of our first, our very first Neighborhood First Program, if you will, the first of the first, which we all were so excited about in 2018. This is a component of that, you'll remember that program was of scope of about $6.4 million. It included this facade improvement for the overall benefit of the community. And so we're now here bringing this item to you. The funding of it is made available via the CRA, the CRA Board has authorized that funding. It is being executed by our Neighborhood Affairs Division. Ashley, will you describe, I think it's really important to describe how the program will work for the residents and, you know, kind of a general description of things?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Manager. So yeah, the Residential Facade Improvement Program is a part of the Greater Bond Neighborhood First Plan and it funds up to $17,000 in exterior repairs for homeowners. The eligible items include things like the repairs and replacements of roofs, doors, windows, porches, painting of exterior parts of the home, landscaping and fencing. These repairs are prioritized to focus on code enforcement and safety issues first and foremost, and then energy efficiency, and then beautification of the home. We originally started this off as a pilot with some of the initial seed money that we received from the CRA to kickstart the Greater Bond Neighborhood First Plan and during the first round of applications, the initial application period, we received more than 200 applications for this program. We were able to award 13 grants, five of those have been completed to date and the others are in progress. As a part of the program, we've hired and contracted with the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium initially to act as the program administrator and construction manager, if you will, for these projects. What they do, they're the quality control, they help the residents determine the scope of the project, what repairs are needed, and then also oversee the actual construction to make sure that those repairs are done right and they deal with all the subcontractors and again, just service quality control and assurance for the homeowners. Now that we've received additional funding for the bond plan, we're ready to expand the capacity of this program and bring on additional contractors. We have funds now to be able to provide grants to at least 87 additional homes. That would bring our total up to 100 homes that would be able to take advantage of these funds and depending on the actual dollar amounts of the individual awards, we may actually be able to provide additional funds to a few more homes. So to do that, we want to expand our capacity and what we're asking for today is to be able to enter into contracts with three different project program administrator companies. One would still be the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium, the second would be Florida Developers, and the third would be Graceful Solutions. And I wanted to just take just a minute and share here real quickly some of the wonderful results from this project. There's a couple of homes on Keith Street, you can see those before and after pictures there, and here's a home on Holton Street, and then finally, a couple of homes on Saxon Street. So the neighborhood, again, has really been excited about this, the response has been overwhelming and we're looking forward to being able to really ramp up the capacity and get some more homes enrolled in this program. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Ashley, certainly do appreciate it. I don't know about you all, I'm excited about this program, this is one of our top pri- yeah, well, I'm going to get everybody, I promise you. It's one of our top priorities as a City Commission and our strategic plan, it's the Bond Neighborhood Plan is also an incredible plan. This is where everything is coming together and we're able to move forward. I saw Commissioner Richardson's hand first and we'll just go down the line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, certainly I support the program, but as I've done in the past, I am a board member of the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium. I wanted to make that acknowledgement and Madam Attorney, ask you for a legal opinion as to whether or not I can vote, given my position with the Board of Directors of the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium.
As I have before, the opinion is that you can participate, we have thoroughly researched this issue and there is no conflict of interest.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Williams Cox.
I wanted to say that I'm very excited about this, I see that there were more homes than we have funding for, but I'm glad to see we're able to add more homes to the list and I'm really pleased at seeing what is actually happening. And if you haven't seen the piece that Dr. Henry Lewis does to promote this program, I suggest that you do. It's a, he does a great job of explaining what's happening in his childhood neighborhood of Bond and what is being done to improve the quality of life and pride there as well. And I'm also happy that of these vendors, some of, at least one of them is, that I'm a, that I know of, is a minority vendor. And so that hits other priorities that we are, we're working on to make sure that we spread the love, we spread the wealth, so that vendors who may be minority vendors also get an opportunity to participate in these projects and receive some of this economic development. So I am pleased to support this and thank you, Ashley, and Neighborhood First and the Bond Community, everyone's involved in making this happen. I see Leanne, thank you for your, you all's work in getting us this far, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter, then Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a few clarifying questions, I'm really excited about this, I actually had the opportunity to work on this when I was an intern at the CRA, so I'm very happy to see this come full circle. I was wondering if what the application scoring looks like when, I noticed in the agenda materials that there's a scoring system for applications, if you could speak a little bit on that, if it's been developed?
Sure, I'll let Leanne talk about the criteria for the scoring, Leanne.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so the scoring, the applications are scored based on a priority point system. So if the applicant's home is owner occupied, they receive three points and then we go into the length of time the home has been owner occupied. So if it's been occupied for 10 to 15 years, they get an additional one point, 16 to 25, two points, 25 years and up, they get three points. If the home is an occupier rental unit, they get one point. And if the home is located on a street that has been identified in the plan for streetscaping, they receive one point as well. So the maximum number of points that can be received through the program is seven points.
And Commissioner, this point criteria was developed and established by the Community Action Team, the Bond Citizen Group that advises us on the implementation of the plan.
Thank you, thank you, and that makes good sense. And then my final question is, with the grant, is that directly paid for services to the construction, you know, Graceful Solutions, the consortium, or is it a refund or how does that work?
Those funds are directly paid to the group, the Lenders Consortium or Florida Developers or Graceful Solutions, to manage the construction. The funds are, the homeowner does not incur any out-of-pocket expenses and then obviously there's an administrative fee paid to those companies to oversee the project out of that, but the company actually pays the subcontractors for the work, the homeowner doesn't have to worry about any of that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ashley and Leanne and everybody who's been involved in this. This is, you know, it's exciting to see the steps we've taken, to see the photos, to drive down the streets and see, when you see those facade improvements, it just screams somebody cares and it starts with a neighbor or neighborhood saying, you know, we care about this area and we want to improve it and to just see that come to life through these facade improvements, I think it's been a great thing and we look forward to more to come, thank you.
Commissioner Williams Cox, would you like to make the motion for staff recommendation?
Absolutely.
Seconded. And seconded by Commissioner Richardson, seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number 13.04, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item and the next item involve, they seek your approval of grants from the federal government for our Star Metro system. Specifically, we're seeking approval for Federal Transit Administration grant and to authorize me or my designee to execute the grant and related documents and to expend funds of approximately $3.8 million for the 5307 FTA grant and funds of $428,000 for the 5339 FTA grant. They are of significant impact and value to our system, they are essential to the good operation of our Star Metro system and are used for a variety of things, including capital a variety of things, including capital expenses. I'd like to take just a moment and have our Director of Star Metro, Angela Baldwin, who's with us via WebEx, to provide a little background of how we use the funds. And I want to take a moment to talk about our strategy and our general direction of converting our fleet, our Star Metro fleet, to electric buses, which we're well on our way of doing, surprisingly, beyond probably anybody's expectation. But that's a big impact, and will require a lot of planning and grants like this. Angela, will you share a little more detail, please?
Sure. Thank you, City Manager. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Mayor Commissioners, Star Metro, we actively seek state and federal funding opportunities that, as the manager said, support operating and capital expenses. And there are annual grants that are separate from our day-to-day operational funding that we rely on when building and planning our budget. And today, we're asking for permission to accept these grants, which includes Section 5307 and 5339. And to expound a little bit further, this funding is Star Metro's annual allocation from the Federal Transit Administration. The amounts vary year to year as the FTA uses a formula, which is based on compilation of our system data, to determine each year's allocation. Star Metro uses the funding for operator salaries, bus replacement, facility maintenance, planning studies, and security, and such. And lastly, our Section 5339 funding is used to fund capital projects to replace and rehabilitate buses. And both these grants come into play as we look to shift our fixed route buses to 100% electric by 2035. Currently, we have 19 electric buses, which represents approximately a third of our daily operating fleet. Our plans, they entail the acquisition of electric buses as we potentially replace the current non-electric fleet in the next 14 years. And identifying a good funding source and strategy early on is very critical, as the useful life of a bus is approximately 12 years. So therefore, the decisions made regarding our strategy, long-term plans, and infrastructure needs will impact how we do our part to realize the city's sustainable goals. And we thank you, and we appreciate your support as we move forward with this plan.
Commissioner Williams-Cox, I think you coined it best at one point that these are your favorite agenda items, the one where we formally accept millions of dollars in grants from other governmental entities. I saw your hand first, Commissioner.
I move accept staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox for staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 13.05, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. This is very similar. This is another Federal Transit Administration grant. This one is for approximately $195,000. It is targeted for our dialeride or paratransit service, and specifically needs to be used to improve mobility for seniors and individuals with disabilities. We also seek your approval of this one.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Move acceptance of staff recommendation.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. Ms. Baldwin, keep up the great work. Thank you very much. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Mr. Manager, do we have anything else to come before us under policy formation and direction?
No, sir, we do not.
Mr. Clerk, we are on un-agenda business speakers. Will you please walk us through?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We have six or seven speakers in person and a few connected via WebEx. We'll begin here with Stanley Sims. He will be followed by Tony Miller, as with our earlier portion. Each speaker has three minutes, and they start with a name and address. We would appreciate it.
Mr. Sims, thanks for joining us. Your name and address, please.
Mr. Mayor, Stanley Sims, 1320 Avondale Way. I'm gonna make my mind real straight and direct. Commissioner Porter, Commissioner Matlow, your followers seem to think that process doesn't matter, that if it's right, they can bully their way to get what they want. You gave me the thumbs up. See, I view that white privilege, because I don't have that luxury. I've been waiting almost five years for a jobs program. I couldn't bully like they bully, how they antagonize this 63-year-old lady at the meeting in front of the review board. Why I'm calling your name? Because it's that appearance. And then the way they go after Commissioner Curtis Richardson and Diane Cox, like, they got a pass to go after them. I go after them, because you know why? When I went to prison, Curtis—and I don't mean that disrespect—Commissioner Richardson called my mama, "I can't get you two to come to French Town." But you'll hang out with a black Republican who did airwaves against our Senate Democrat. I'm confused. I'm confused, and they confused, because they think you backing them. So straighten it. Stop bringing in these plants. These are your Democrats. Do it in deed, not in words. I don't like them—I don't take that back. Me and the mayor has differences, but we call it like we see it. At the end of the day, we're Tallahasians. We'll have another fight. But if I call Commissioner Richardson right now and tell him my mama can't find the medicine, he finna say, "Stanley, wait, let me call so-and-so-and-so-and-so." Can I get that from y'all? When I was waiting four years, and they had a ban that I'm the first black man could come in the city, what was y'all mind?
You have 20 seconds.
It was them. Words become deeds, my brother. Consistency, equity. Don't play with it.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker is Tony Miller, then Kelsey Lang.
Mr. Miller, thank you for joining us today. Your name and address for the record.
Tony Miller, and I'm here on behalf of CityWalk at 1709 Mayhand Drive. You know, in our site plan application, it was due on February 5th, and we never asked to be a low-barrier shelter. Back when the COC and the city decided to back off from the political pressure, we decided to change our direction to a housing first. And when I applied, I never talked about us being—in the site plan, I never talked about us being a shelter anymore. We're gonna be a dorm with a lot of rules. Whenever we heard neighbors complain, we made changes. We opened up as a day center to prevent loitering. We maintained the bus stops. We literally take the trash out at the bus stops. They took—a TPD report. And did you know that back when COC was still busing people into us, the first few weeks of January, there were eight trespass calls? From January 24th to the last day of February, there were only three. That's after we made our changes. And from March 1st to today, there have been zero. We are doing everything right, but all they rehash is everything that happened in December, when the COC was busing in people for the cold night shelters, and it was utter chaos. We addressed all the neighbors' concerns, and we just needed more time to get more data from the TPD to show you how things have been quieted down for six weeks now. I feel like they were a no from the start. I think they were a no before they even cashed our $12,000 non-refundable application fee. We all know that the public comment was just a dog and pony show at the DRC meeting. They didn't take any of that into account. It was just a complete waste of time while they pretended to listen. They knew they were gonna deny us before they even—why even bother doing it? They leaked their recommendation to the press four days before we even had our post-op meeting. When I asked them at the post-op meeting, "Can we rebut? Can we give you feedback on some—we've made some changes?" They said, "No, what we wrote's gonna stay." "Well, why are we at this post-op meeting?" But now that CityWalk is denied, who's gonna dare open a shelter in the city of Tallahassee in the future unless that's your plan? You don't want somebody to open one. Because you set an example, not only how the city treats the homeless, but how the city treats any church that tries to live out its faith. You crush them under the weight of bureaucracy, and you use the system as a weapon to get your way to appease a handful of people.
You're at two and a half minutes.
The First Amendment reads, "Congress shall make no law respecting, establishing religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." My religion commands me to feed, clothe, and shelter people. If you take away 33% of that, you're taking away 100% of my free practice thereof. CityWalk's on the right side of God. We're on the right side of humanity, on the right side of history, and the government is just an obstacle. We're gonna continue as church offices. We're gonna invite all the unsheltered people to come and stay and find the love of Christ, get some food.
You're at three minutes.
And every night when Bible studies are over, we're gonna dismiss them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Our next speaker.
Kelsey Lang, then Rico Kelly.
Lang, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Lang, and I'm interested in the evidence of CityWalk and the things that we're trying to do there. I'm not officially somebody who works for them, but I am a client. I have noticed several different things. I stayed at the Kearney Center for about a year, a year and a half. With CityWalk, I have a firm foundation, and somebody to talk to when I'm in need, and someone to help me get through all the trauma that I've been through being homeless for the past 10 years. I say that we are trying to follow ordinance, that we need help with that, too, because our firefighters, we're with them, and—I mean, we're not against them, and we need their protection. And also, we have sprinkler systems that are in some sewer stuff that needs to happen in our facility. And I ask that you guys notice that. And also, that I have been felt stronger with the CityWalk than any other place. I now got a job at Gate. I'm reoccurring to see my kids again in the future. Eckerd Community Alternatives is helping me do that. We are not the demise that everybody speaks of us. We're a family. We love each other. I'd like for everybody to understand that. And to this man that was talking, and maybe the first speaker, we are not negotiable on being fair-minded and loving people. We do love everybody. We have no bias against him. That's all I have.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Rico Kelly, and then Eric Moody.
Mr. Kelly, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Rico Kelly. I reside at 1709 Mayhand Drive. I'm one of the residents at CityWalk. I'm also a military vet. I was in Operation Iraqi Freedom. I didn't fight for my freedom to have my first offended rights, First Amendment rights taken away from me. Since I've joined this program, this organization, and this is my church home, this is like me fighting in a war all over again. I mean, we've done everything we can to do it right. When the city—the Kearney Center just dumped their dredges on us to make us look bad, we still endure all of that, and we still here today. We're not going anywhere. This program has done so much for me that you would not believe and understand. It's helped change my life. I'm becoming a productive member of society again. I'm a convicted felon. Everybody has a past. You see what that shirt says? Every saint has a past, and every sinner such as myself has a very bright future. I should have on sunglasses. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Next is Eric Moody, and then I believe it's Sandito Forbes.
Mr. Moody, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Eric Moody, 296 Crossway Road. I stand here today to speak to the board. It's not about the city versus the homeless. It's about the city versus my right as a member of CityWalk to freely express our religion without government interference. God called us as a church to feed the hungry. You gave me something to eat. I was thirsty. You gave me something to drink. I was a stranger. You invited me in. You clothed me. When I was sick, you took care of me. This is what God called us to do. As a member of CityWalk, where the Kearney Center shut down, they stepped up. Where there's nowhere for them to go. Kearney Center haven't been open for a year. The community centers is not open. What would you like for them to sleep? In the woods? We're talking about humans. We're not talking about dogs, cats. We're talking about humans. Tallahassee loves everyone. They're part of our community, too. If we're gonna fight to end human trafficking, gun violence, and support the community come together, but we stand down when it's a conversation about the homeless? I fought for this country. I lost my sight to fight for the right, for my first memory right to worship with my church, to feed, to shelter, and to clothe. You're taking away—you're trying to take away a part of my religion. How is that fair? How can you tell a 76-year-old man that's dying? You do not matter. You cannot sleep indoors. Or have you ever had—you ever had—you ever had MS come to you and say, "Hey, we picked up somebody that's near hypothermia, but yet it's still—I'm sorry, you can't sleep inside. You could rather die outside." CityWalk stepped up. We just wanna practice our religion. These comments about defecation, these comments about the bus thing, we fix those. When people say something 30 times, you think it happened 30 times. No, it didn't.
You're at two and a half minutes.
It happened once. We fixed it. I just have to mention that, Commissioner, you said Tallahassee is a family, and we work together. Not working together for the homeless. How are we working together when we shut down? The Kearney Center shut down. What other shelter? The hotels? Hotels ain't even zoned. Let's get it right.
Thank you.
Mr. Forbes next, and then Henry Choice.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sandy A. Forbes, and I live at 400 Capitol Circle, Southeast 243. On the CityWalk issue, I've lived at the homeless shelter myself. I lived at Hope, Kearney, the old shelter they tore down. I haven't lived at CityWalk. But in my five years of living there, I designed what I think would fix the problems they're discussing. I designed it over five years living at the Kearney Center. But I'm not here to just help these guys, because I've been homeless. I'm still homeless. But I work just like everybody else. You know, I pay my bills, et cetera, et cetera. But I know where they're coming from. What I'm here to talk about today is I'm requesting that the mayor and the respected commissioners adopt a design that I created about five years ago. It's a new detention facility that would basically help the law enforcement and everybody else feel a little safer within our area. It's a detention facility that would service all five counties, where it would be the main hub to kind of lower the overcrowding of our current jail facilities. It would work with law enforcement from city police up to immigration, FBI, et cetera. And if the city would help me complete my designs, you know, it would be great, and I think it would create jobs for other law enforcement, give safety for all the residents of our city. I have friends. These people here probably know Sonia Bogan. They used to call her VSO P. She was murdered. They set her on fire. She lived in the homeless center at the Kearney. She was my best friend. Alexandra Rissard, she was a mother. She was found dead not—right over there on Orange Avenue. And there are several other people that lived at the homeless center that wound up And there are several other people that lived at the homeless center that wound up in bad situation. It's not that you guys have forgotten, it's that it's an enormous thing to handle, and...
You have about twenty seconds.
And my skills in designing and interior decorating and all that. I use my skills to help you guys, and you guys solve problems. You know, I sit back and I think, I've been living here ever since I was seven. I'm a Native African American, and my grandfather was none other than Abraham Forbes. You guys know him as Seminole Abraham, Fort Gaston.
You're at three minutes.
That's my great-grandfather. So I'm here to do what he did two hundred and fifty years ago, help protect the people of Tallahassee. I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Henry Choice is our last speaker in chambers, and then we'll move to those via WebEx.
Yes, sir. Mr. Choice, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Choice, Henry Choice, one four one Fleming Road. Mine is on an unagenda item. I didn't know the situation of homeless was still this bad, so I want to be the first one to donate a hundred thousand. And my program that I spoke to the state, that me and Mr. Marlowe has rearranged for two years, the program is in all over the world, and I'm bringing a lot of revenue in for the city. Like I said, I didn't know the homeless situation, the situation was still this bad. I hope this hundred thousand be able to help the homeless situation.
Moving to our...
Thank you. That is a very generous offer. Thank you. I would encourage the Assistant City Manager Barber to work with both gentlemen, that one has the proposal and the donation, and be able to point them in the right directions, Ms. Barber, if you don't mind. That'd be great. Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Yes, our first unengaged speaker on WebEx is Nick Rye. Nick Rye.
Ms. Rye?
Yes, can you hear me?
We sure can. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nick Rye. I live at six two nine East Park Avenue, apartment two, Tallahassee, three two three zero one.
You may begin.
Okay, thank you. I am the founder of Tally Community Aid, which is a mutual aid group in town that got started at the beginning of the pandemic because I knew that the city was probably not going to make up for all of the the houses crisis that was about to ensue due to the pandemic. We only have the Kearney Center, and we have CityWalk. Those are the two shelters we have in town, and I think it's abominable that you're trying to shut down CityWalk because of a few people living around the area that have a problem with it. I think it's elitist. Jack Porter, I voted for you. I expect you to do something in this situation. Also, I work with Tally, with Tally Community Aid, and we're working at the plant. I see houses people all of the time. I see them all day. I know their names. I work with them. I used to be homeless. I spent several years homeless. I think that it's disgusting that you're willing to neglect an entire portion of your community. We already see issues where the city favors certain parts of the city, like the south side versus the north side. We see one side of the city getting way more funding than the other, and we have to, we know why that is. I am imploring you to do something about CityWalk and to make sure that they are still able to have their doors open, because as part of Tally Community Aid, we have directed many people to that shelter. There are not, there's not a lot of help in the city. Please stop funding, or please put more funding into helping your people instead of shutting down shelters. And also, considering, like, we have the history of this. I've seen it before, like, in the park at Lake Ella, where you went ahead and got rid of the pavilions almost overnight, where a lot of houses people were staying or hanging out. There's no shelter. There's, you have no institution, like, there's nothing in town for houses people. You have nothing set up for them, except for the Kearney Center, which has basically shut down the entire time during the pandemic. In about a month or two, the Tally Community, or Tally Utilities Company is going to shut off everyone's electric that couldn't pay during the pandemic. We are in the middle of a houses crisis. I can't believe that you are trying to shut this shelter down.
You're at two and a half minutes.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker is Haley Toaks, or Toks. I may have the last name mispronounced, but Haley is the first name.
That's me. Name is Haley Toks. Address is one five zero five Wikiwanini, three two three zero one.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. So, as Amanda Wander told you all last month, clearly, there is a need for an emergency shelter, and CityWalk has stepped up to fill that need. The least you can do is not stand in their way. If their facilities don't meet your security standards, why not help them? If you're wondering where the money would come from, I'd suggest you take a good look at the police budget, but they're not even asking for that. All that they ask is that you don't actively prevent them from helping people. How could taking away these beds, putting fifty more people onto the streets each night possibly help the city meet their stated goal of ending homelessness? And if it's the NIMBYs you're worried about, I don't even see how this solves their problem as long as CityWalk continues to provide services. Kicking folks out at the end of the day is just an arbitrary act of meanness, like most politics, policies towards the unhoused, like locking public restrooms and putting dividers on benches. I know the shelter's not going to fix it. Obviously, the causes of homelessness need to be addressed, but in the meantime, why can't we make things just a tiny bit easier for the people experiencing it? Ask yourself what's more of a nuisance, being asked for money, or having to ask strangers for money because you don't know where your next meal is coming from? Having your property's values go down, if that even happens, which I'm not sure the evidence supports, or not even having a room to call your own? And how would you answer those questions if it was happening to someone you loved? I'm not going to preach, because I think it's so obvious what the moral humane thing to do is, but from a pragmatic view, I come back to something else that Amanda Wander said at the last meeting. We have a willing provider coming to the table. What we need is the capacity to build them up to be able to provide the service and not create roadblocks so that no other provider wants to step forward to do that. I mean, CityWalk is trying to solve your problems. Why stop them? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Elizabeth Phillips.
Ms. Phillips, are you with us? Ms. Phillips?
I am. I'm here. I apologize.
That's okay. Your name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Elizabeth Phillips, and we live at eleven twenty-four Carissa Drive. We are the capital city, and we do not discriminate. We want to make sure everyone has a safe place to live, play, shop, dine. Mayor Daley, you said this on March ninth, twenty twenty-one, as you discussed the Open to All campaign. Commissioner Cox, you said, come one, come all. We are here to make sure that the government operates efficiently and that all citizens are safe. You said this at the same campaign. Did you mean those words? Because your actions toward the unsheltered and unhoused constituents in the capital city have honestly begun leading me to believe otherwise. Do their voices not matter as much because they do not bring with them the prized capital that can add to our economy? I want so much to believe that all voices matter to all of you sitting there, but with the exception of one, maybe two of you, I do not know anymore. We have a homeless epidemic here in this country. It is out of control in this city that I love so much, and we are all looking to you for help. I live point five miles from the shelter and have been to CityWalk multiple times now. I have been affected zero by the people living there. I have participated in their Free Lunch Fridays to get to know the residents and have found them to be no different than me, except for a house. Mayhand has never looked better, in my opinion. Now, I cannot speak for the businesses, but I can say that everywhere I go in Tallahassee, from the northeast to the south side, I see panhandling and IC soliciting. If anyone thinks we can get rid of it totally, then more power to them. But it is unrealistic to blame CityWalk for all of this. I have never been aggressively approached by anyone at any of the businesses, but of course, I'm not there regularly. But what I can speak to with emphasis is my neighborhood. I have still, to date, never seen anyone that remotely looks homeless, whatever that means, walking up and down my neighborhood. I have never felt frightened because of CityWalk being located where it is. I have never witnessed any drug deals, even though there are still homes that still dabble due to their smell that comes from them. But I do see a lot of families walking their dogs, meandering in the neighborhoods, the same as I did before the shelter moved in. CityWalk is the only entity stepping up and doing something to help. The issues amongst neighbors will resolve over time, or they will not, but at the end of the day, we are all looking to you for help with this crisis, because it is not about us, it is about them. This is not the time to sit back and say, it is not our problem. We need leadership right now more than ever. In Richmond, Virginia, the mayor, the city commission have taken a stance to stand up to NIMBYism and have worked through zoning issues to make the implementation of shelters around the city smoother. This has been hard, and the leaders have been under fire, I am sure, from many of the entitled constituents who are not used to being told no, much like we have seen here. But they are doing it because it is the right thing to do. We need leaders who are not afraid to do what is right. It takes nothing to do the easy task. It takes everything to do the hard task. I'm sorry to say it, but you have allowed a group of entitled, not-in-my-backyard individuals to get their way without even giving this transitional housing place... I'm sorry. Giving this transitional housing place an opportunity to prove anyone right or wrong. Any other business would at least be given a chance. If this were in any other part of town, these discussions would not even be entertained right now, but you all continue to allow them to think that they are the ones running this show. I do not trust them. Can I just, I have five seconds left.
Of course.
I do not trust them to come up with solutions. I do not even feel safe living next to some of them with their threats of guns and tasers and calling the cops on people for delivering flyers within these communities. I do trust you all, as my elected officials, to protect all of your constituents. One of the anti-shelter individuals liked to say that the homeless are all drug addicts, prostitutes, criminals, and sex offenders. She could not be more disconnected from the stark reality of what exists at seventeen oh nine Mayhand Drive. They are the elderly, the working, the victims of human trafficking. There's even an ex city of Tallahassee employee, and they need you. Please do something and do it soon. They do not have the luxury of waiting for more meetings to happen. I'm sorry for going over, but thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Jack Fox Keane.
Hello. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Jack Fox Keane. I live at one three two Dixie Drive, apartment twenty-one, Tallahassee, Florida, three two three zero four.
You may begin.
My name is Jack, and I volunteer at the Plant, a collective art and mutual aid space in downtown Tallahassee. I am here to talk about the closure of CityWalk as a homeless shelter. I have never been houseless, but I have been behind my paychecks. Just recently, there were issues with my invoices, and I wasn't able to pay rent. Thankfully, my roommate could cover the cost, but I had, but had I been living alone, had I lost my job entirely, had my roommate struggled at the exact same time, this situation could have turned out much differently. People take for granted the fact that they have homes, that they don't have to live paycheck to paycheck, that they are blessed with family and friends who will help them in a tight spot. Not everyone has these luxuries. I have known people who were houseless for many reasons. For some, it was mental illness, a silent pandemic for which we have no vaccine, no comprehensive infrastructure to address it at all. For others, it was because they were members of the LGBTQ plus community, and they were kicked out by bigoted family members. Still more were escaping abusive situations and found themselves stranded in a strange and unforgiving city. I have met a family living in a tent this past year because the parents lost their jobs during the pandemic. These people should not be punished. I am not sorry that inconveniences privilege people to face the facts that our system has failed so many. I am sorry that you do not have the emotional capacity to care beyond your social circle. I pity you for your selfishness. I yield my time.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Next is Lynn Massamore. I'm not sure the connection had been made, but want to be sure to give the opportunity for Lynn Massamore.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Oh, thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi. My name is Lynn Massamore. I'm at eighteen hundred Jasmine Drive in the Brant Hills neighborhood. Yesterday, or actually, the day before, when the Development Review Committee was shooting down CityWalk's request for variance, the Richmond City Council and city leadership was doing the exact opposite and unanimously approved zoning changes to ease the way for homeless shelters, transitional housing, and emergency housing. Richmond is a state capital like Tallahassee. It's of similar size to Tallahassee. They have a similarly sized homeless population for all of the same reasons as those living unsheltered in Tallahassee. They also have influential homeowners and business people who are not happy about unsheltered people in their midst. Richmond's city leadership chose to do more than wear red Xs and attend prayer vigils. They did the right thing and not the politically expedient thing. They took a stand for those who don't have as loud a voice. They saw the uproar that shelters faced previously when trying to set up and establish neighborhoods, I think that's familiar to us right now, and took steps to smooth the way, recognizing that the way you solve a homeless crisis is by increasing availability of services and reducing barriers to access. Richmond's leadership rebuffed those typical complaints and reminded those concerned that unsheltered residents are also constituents, and they are our neighbors. Why aren't you? See? Why aren't you? Your responses to the abhorrent language and behavior of some housed residents has set the tone. I mean, it's tone at the top. Okay? They think their relative wealth and status in their neighborhood gives them the right to decide who can and can't live on Mayhand Drive. If you haven't already watched the end of the Development Review Committee, when the decision was announced, some of these same individuals actually applauded the decision to deny the permit in the presence of those whom they are trying to turn out into the street. They applauded. I watched them. Your silence, your lukewarm responses, and your outright denouncements have been an endorsement of these actions. It's emboldened their misinformation, their exaggerations, generalizations, and slander of individuals who have done nothing to bother anyone. It jeopardizes their safety, housing, and in some cases, their recovery. You've allowed the residents of CityWalk to be conflated with Tallahassee's homeless problem, such that any misbehavior east of Monroe Street is attributed to CityWalk, and that's not true, and you know it. Get it together. A CityWalk has stepped up when no one else would, so quit throwing up roadblocks, please, to their success, because affluent people are a little bit inconvenienced. Give CityWalk the guidance and the permits they need to be a permanent part of our community. There isn't another viable plan waiting in the wings, and even if there was, that plan should be enacted in addition to, not instead of.
You have about thirty seconds.
For as long as that need exists. If you're out of ideas, I've listed the contact information for Richmond's city leadership at the bottom of my letter to the city commission. I would urge you to contact them, please, and I've also copied the article there for your review. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Our last speaker via WebEx is Nicole Soza. If Nicole Soza is there, name and address, please. We did not have a connection at the beginning of the meeting, Mayor, so maybe she was unable to join us. We did, I did have one additional speaker arrive in person who would like to speak, and that is Osvaldo Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Osvaldo Hernandez. I live at twenty-seven sixty-nine Kennedy Drive. Excuse me. A little bit rushed getting in here. Afternoon, commissioners. I come before you today just to speak on behalf of the hundreds of citizens here in Tallahassee who are currently going through what some of you have deemed a homelessness crisis. Now, it's no stranger to me nor anybody in this room that the last year has been quite troublesome for many of our citizens. Some of them have been experiencing difficulty since before the pandemic started, excuse me. But as far as the city's handling of the situation, I've seen many successful programs rolled out by the city of Tallahassee in my ten years, near ten years as a resident. Homelessness has definitely not been one of those successes. On numerous occasions, I know the citizens have come and presented... and presented both to the commissioners in this board, as well as to many other public officials that we have here with regards to the issues that homelessness has caused and the issue that is homelessness and the inadequate treatment of those, uh, who are houseless in our community. And as far as, uh, as far as me personally, uh, I just, I have to, I have to say that it's, it's troubling. I haven't seen the issue addressed in a proper way. I have definitely, uh, been less than enthused by the, um, essentially wordplay and the bureaucracy that has been thrown at, uh, organizations like CityWalk, um, who have tried for the better part and as best they can to house some of our most, uh, needed in the population and my fellow constituents. It has, it's been troubling. Time and again, uh, the people have presented, uh, the case for why the city needs to do a better job of addressing this problem. And time and again, they've been shot down, and it has not come to fruition in any way. Instead, what we've seen is, uh, more millions of dollars spent on fruitless industries, such as gateway projects, convention centers in the middle of a pandemic, et cetera, et cetera. I could probably go on, as I'm sure you can. And it is disheartening and disgusting, in my opinion.
You have about 30 seconds.
To focus on when there are people literally starving and fighting to try to find a roof over their heads, especially on the recent freezing nights that we've had. What I would like to say to the commission before me is there's a timeline before you all decide to cut off all these utilities, uh, coming up at the end of the month. And I definitely suggest you do your best to meet that timeline and get these people housed and in adequate shelter. Otherwise, I would say I definitely look forward to your next election cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, we've had an additional individual arrive. We'll get a speaker card after his, after his comments.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
That's Michael Dobson. Uh, the address is 4005 Brandon Hill Drive. And I'm just speaking here, well, I guess on behalf of myself and also the Dream Foundation. Uh, we've been very supportive of CityWalk. Uh, we all know that the Development Review Committee, i.e. the staff, non-elected individuals lacking in diversity of its body, unanimously voted against housing the homeless, because they call them a public nuisance. All I'll say to that is, for all of us to look into the mirror, because the citizens, you know, humans, voters, and they all live at, all those folks that live at 1709 Mahan Drive are no different than you or I. We all go back to dust no matter what. Now, when I look upon this dais, I don't know where everybody lives or part of town, but I can tell you one thing, that unless you live under a rock, you drive anywhere around this town, any, any corner, uh, you'll notice that we have a homeless problem. Uh, not just in Tallahassee, but around the nation, around the state. Uh, they're, uh, they're not just in the lower, uh, income communities. They're in the higher income communities as well. I live in Clarnes Estates, and I'll tell you, there are, there are homeless at the Publix on, uh, Thomas Field Road. Uh, they ask for help sometimes. Uh, they live in my neighborhood, uh, in the woods, you know, but they, you know, but they live there. Now, in the testimony from the residents, um, at the meeting on Monday, what I mostly heard was fear of the homeless and frankly dislike of the homeless. In fact, they seem to view them as trash. Trash that may interfere with their profit or profit, property value. I would suggest that it is of great value to live in a community that have the well-to-do coexist with the least of these, making it an ecosystem of humanity that celebrates the sameness in all of us. And placing the Kearney Center at its location, did the neighborhoods there not deserve the same pushback or concern from city staff? Is it because they're areas of lower income and many students? You have been allowed, you have allowed the homeless to live in Frenchtown for more than a decade. Have allowed hotels losing occupancy because of global pandemic. How is the homeless using government-backed vouchers?
You have 20 seconds remaining.
Well, I'll just end by saying that I'm ashamed of what I heard at the meeting on Monday. I actually heard people clap upon learning that someone would lose their home. Are we really that city? Are we really that people? So I ask, can you, commission, can you find a third way? There's always a third way. Can you find a third way to fix this problem and allow the homeless to actually have a home? Thank you.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Dobson, please don't forget to fill out a card for the record. Any other speakers, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Let's turn to commission discussion. We'll start with, okay, yes, ma'am, Commissioner Williams Cox.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Since most of the comments have been about CityWalk and, and the, uh, um, homeless situation, let me just share, I'm going to share a statement from the executive director, um, of the Big Ben Continuum of Care. And when I, when I do this, let me just share with you too, to check out the Big Ben Continuum of Care website, and it tells you that the purpose of the COC is to develop and implement strategies to help end homelessness in the Big Ben. They coordinate the community's policies, strategies, and activities toward ending homelessness. And it gives a list of things that they do. They do this across eight counties. So homelessness is not just in Leon County. And it didn't just start when CityWalk located on Mahan. It has existed always. And, um, I want to read to you because I have been working with, um, the executive director and our, uh, the leader here in the city of Tallahassee with our, um, Housing Department. Um, and having seen your comments, and, uh, I wanted to come with information. And this, I'm going to read to you from her email. This Thursday afternoon, Big Ben Continuum of Care is hosting a staffing session with our members, providers, and CityWalk staff to review each client residing at CityWalk to ensure referrals to other homeless services and housing opportunities are completed. Through our coordinated entry process, we will identify a CityWalk staff who will serve as a representative for each client so that our other service partners can follow up and set up times with the staff and client to complete program eligibility assessments and then enroll them in programs that can assist with permanent housing, like our rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing programs. We can give more specifics on the aggregate data of client needs once we have a couple of staffing sessions completed with these partners. As of now, CityWalk staff have agreed to participate in these staffings, which is critical since they are working with these individuals now and know current updates on their situations. We will provide you with a more detailed update on the progress of the staffings Friday morning of this week. So tomorrow, there's going to be a meeting and, um, based on what, what I've been provided. CityWalk is, has agreed to participate because the goal is to make sure that the clients get serviced and, and that they can go, be on their way, as the, as the veteran said, so that he can be on his way to be, to continuing his track to being a productive citizen in our community. So I think that we, we should give this opportunity tomorrow afternoon. We should give this opportunity to allow Big Ben Continuum of Care and those members. And someone said that there, there are only two shelters, Kearney and CityWalk. That's not true. There are other shelters. And so I just encourage you to please work with Big Ben Continuum of Care, which we support by, by providing, uh, representation on their board. We also, city provides funding. Our goal is to make sure that the human beings, as you said, um, Mr. Moody, human beings actually have a, a, a permanent housing solution. So I offer that to let you know that we do care. We do care. We care about the individuals, and we care about people having their freedoms to do as they, as they choose. But we have to, um, follow some processes, some protocols, and make sure people are assessed and that they get the need, that they get their needs serviced. So I just wanted to, uh, provide that information. I got that from, uh, Amanda Wander, Executive Director of the Big Ben of Continuum of Care.
Commissioner Williams Cox, since you have the floor, do you have anything else for the good of the order to bring forward?
Um, I wanted to congratulate, since it was mentioned, uh, tonight. I want to congratulate Capitol City Chamber. We did participate in a press conference yesterday, uh, to say open to all. We were talking about business, that, uh, you know, business is welcome here, but we, you know, uh, others, others are welcome as well. We also participated in a, uh, a press conference this morning. Uh, um, the mayor represented the city, uh, in regards to the PSAs that will be hitting the street regarding, uh, vaccination. And we are encouraging everyone to, uh, get your vaccine if you, if you're able to. I, I, my husband and I will be receiving our second one on Saturday. And, uh, we are encouraging everyone to, 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 to get it if you can. Um, also want to recognize International Women's Day was on Monday. So, um, last, a couple of years ago, we had women here dressed in white. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to celebrate International Women's Day with women dressed in white, uh, in, in chambers because we won't have COVID to deal with. So with that, I want to just, just say, be safe out there.
Excellent. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it has been really difficult to imagine what, what the unsheltered in this community are, are going through. I have refrained from commenting on the CityWalk shelter in particular because we were advised against doing so. I do want to make very clear, um, where I stand on, about the unsheltered. And I believe that housing is a human right. I think it is totally unacceptable that in our country, the wealthiest nation that anyone is homeless. Um, the commissioners did not have a direct role in the permitting process, but we are responsible for the city and for protecting the most vulnerable among us. That includes our, our children, our, our neighborhoods, um, those without homes. Uh, I, I kind of feel like we're acting like our hands are tied when they're not. There is so much more that we could and should be doing, and I, I think we need to take responsibility for that. Um, it is just a matter of fact that there are alternatives and solutions that we are not considering. Um, I, I did run to make a difference on these issues and to represent those, um, who do not have a voice or who do have a voice and are not, and that voice is not heated. Um, I believe that my colleagues did run for their seats as well. Um, and I do just really feel like we have to do more. I don't think I can stand coming to another meeting where I have, where we hear about this without taking more direct action. This issue is not going to solve itself. I have spoken to Big Ben Continuum of Care. I am not convinced, they are not convinced that they have the capacity. If they did, I'm not, I don't think we would be at this point. Um, they are great partners. I've enjoyed working with them. I, I do not blame them for this. Um, but we need to talk about real solutions here that, because this is, it's not a problem that came out of the pandemic. It's not a problem that's going to be fixed by shutting down a shelter or moving a shelter. It's a persistent problem. Um, I know at the county commission meeting last night, a, a joint workshop was, was discussed. I don't think a joint workshop would, was going to fix all of our problems, but it's, at the very least, it's a start. So I just want to make very clear where I stand on this issue. And I want to thank CityWalk for stepping up to meet this need. A need that I, I personally believe, and I know we can debate about this, the city is responsible for addressing. Um, and so I think this has been a learning experience for, for me. I think it should be for all of us about where we went wrong, how, whether it's in, in process, in planning and preparation. But to me, this is just unacceptable. Um, and I, I think others agree. But I personally just need, I need to see more direct action on this issue. Um, you know, I'm accountable to the people. This, it's very clear to me that the need is there and that the people are asking for this, and I would like to see us move forward, um, with, in a more aggressive position. We, you know, we just had our first budget workshop this morning. Um, our budget is a reflection of our values, of our priorities, of our needs. And we need to put our money where our mouth is as a city and, and get this right. Other communities are doing it, and there's no reason we can't do it also. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams Cox?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, on point, um, Commissioner Porter, I had this conversation with, uh, Amanda, um, on, uh, Monday, I believe it was, because this is the second time you've said that we're not doing all that we can. So I asked her, and I'm going to ask, um, if Abena is still there, because I met with the two of them, if, uh, if I can get her to, to join us online. I asked Amanda, uh, what did she share with you to give you that opinion that we were not doing all that we could? And her answer was that, um, we need more housing. Well, we know that. We, we know we need more housing. That's why we have homelessness, because we don't have enough housing. But besides that, she was not, she was not able to give me a, um, any other, uh, thing that we could be doing because we have provided resources that she has not completely used yet. And she said as much. Um, Abena, could you please add to this, uh, to what I'm saying in, in this regard? Because I, I want to, I want us to be clear and give the right information when we give information about what's going on with homelessness. I see your face, but I can't, I'm not hearing you.
Hi, I, I was waiting for the city manager.
Okay.
Go ahead, Abena, please. Thank you.
Abena?
Sure. Um, uh, yes, so we, the city works with the COC, and we look to them as the statutory body and the, the group that is charged federally to, um, bring the right partners together and to develop a long-term strategy. So, you know, as, as a member of the 31 Board Group and participating with seven other counties, we look for that cohesive strategy, and the city has tried to align our long-term strategies with the recommendations as well. Uh, historically, and or most, most recently, some of the recommendations have been focused on permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing. And so the city commission took that leadership action since the summer with the availability of new resources that we haven't received before and prioritized rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing. And so your, your actions have been in line with the previous recommendations that we've received from the COC. And we are looking forward to their needs assessment, which is coming up in, uh, May. We're expecting that report. I know they might have some preliminary data, but, um, as far as the city is concerned, as a member of that eight-county region, uh, I think we have tried to align our strategies and our investments with the top recommendations that the COC has made.
And as Abena mentioned, the, uh, Amanda did mention that. Let me just, um, touch that a little bit, that they've collected this data that will be provided to us in its final format, uh, in May. And from there, we'll be able to determine what else can be done because other than that, we're, you know, we're outside of the sphere of being efficient and being productive because we need some data to drive what we're, what we can and cannot do. And so they are, they're in charge of, of, of that data. And, um, she will be back to provide us with some updates. And I, I think it may be, um, in the next, either the next commission meeting or the one after that, to provide us some updates because I have, I'm talking with her bi-weekly, uh, to determine what else can we be doing? What, you know, again, we provided resources. She hasn't used all of the resources she said that, that, that they, that we have provided. So what, um, so I'm, I'm just saying, we are, we're doing, it's not that we're sitting around twiddling our thumbs. We are doing, um, following the guidance. Uh, and I don't, you know, I don't want anyone to be homeless either. I don't want to be homeless. But we have to follow a process, um, and not get ahead of who is, who's, who's leading, um, leading this. But we are very supportive, as, as, as Abena mentioned. We got a 31-member board that's an eight-county, uh, group that's dealing with homelessness because if it moves from one place, it moves somewhere else. So we're trying to be, do a. So we're trying to do a, follow a comprehensive plan. So I just wanted to just add that this was a conversation that we had on Monday with Amanda, asking the question, what else can we be doing? And basically, outside of building some houses, we need to wait for the data in May. And as I mentioned, attend this meeting on, have providers attend this meeting on tomorrow to determine what can be done to help people get into more permanent housing that are currently clients at CityWalk.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Porter?
I would rather Amanda speak for herself, so I won't address that. I think that's precisely why a workshop, another opportunity to discuss this, would be appropriate. My understanding is that we, from her, is that we do need around at least 280 units of permanent supportive housing. I, but I, it's just, I do not personally think, I know what other cities do, I have studied this. We are not doing everything that we can do. And I don't feel like I am doing everything I can do. That is how I feel. So I would like to see us have at least a workshop or a discussion about this, where we talk about real solutions. I mean, if we are doing everything, I just don't accept that, quite frankly. And if what we're doing, if we are doing everything we can do, maybe we just need to do something else because what we're doing isn't working. And we have to be open to, that is our role as commissioners, is to make policy and address these issues. That is our role. Amanda is not an elected official. So I've got to do everything I can do, and that's where my heart is coming from.
Commissioner Williams-Cox, do you have anything else?
I've said all I need to say. Thank you.
Your time? Okay. All right, moving down, Commissioner Richardson and the mayor, Pro Tim?
I don't have anything there.
Great. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll weigh in here. I think housing is an issue. You mentioned 280 units. And what can we do more and what are other communities doing? Other communities are purchasing hotels, that is housing, that is shelter. Other communities are purchasing apartments and have nonprofits that they work with who build housing that they put people in. The question is, we need 280 units, and the Big Ben of Continuum of Care does not have the funding to do that. So we know, when we look at resources we have available, we know that blueprint funding can be used for infrastructure, land acquisition, or affordable housing. We know that. We know that the federal government is handing down $40 million that can be used for infrastructure. So I think we do need to have a comprehensive plan of how we address this, more so than we have ever done in the past. And when we talk about CityWalk, CityWalk is housing right now for the people who live there. That is, those are available units. Whether it's gone through the process, no, it didn't. And that's why we've stayed out of it. Because whether you're in emergency shelter, whether you're a bar, whether you're a hotel development, we want our processes to be firm. If you have a new development, you have an opportunity to get that reviewed by staff and get a decision. And then you have an opportunity to dispute that decision. At some point, it may be required of this board to take separate action. But I hope, as Mr. Dobson said, we can find a third way. And my feelings on it are, I think the biggest gap we have are individual units that people can get relocated in, and that should be our strategy. I don't think we need multiple emergency shelters around our city. But I don't think that doesn't mean CityWalk doesn't have a role to play. And in Mr. Miller's comments, he mentioned they didn't want to be a low-barrier emergency shelter, and they were switching to dorm facilities and those sorts of housing facilities. And so I just have questions about where we are in their process. They've gone before the DRC, Madam Attorney. What is their next step in an appeal process legally?
Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim. So the next part, it's really up to them. They have the opportunity to appeal the decision of the DRC to the planning commission. They have 30 days to appeal that if they disagree. But at this point, the decision of the DRC is the decision. That decision will become final within 30 days. So really, it's up to them as to if they want to appeal that or not.
And Mr. City Manager, their application is to operate an emergency shelter on Mayhand Drive? Is that accurate?
Mayor Pro Tim might have to look. I can't tell you the words in the application. I don't know.
Okay. This is what I want to find out where we're going. Because we've heard comments in the media that have come from CityWalk. We've seen the DRC review. There was a comment made that they are currently zoned to be offices, and they can operate CityWalk offices out of that building. Is that correct?
Can you restate that for me?
Their current, in their current use, which is in an office capacity for CityWalk, they can continue in that use without having to ask for any type of variance or change of use?
That's my understanding. And I will say, I believe that the applicant has asked for a meeting with our growth management experts to clarify what they can do and cannot do. And so I would, I would trust in their guidance, but I do believe what you said is correct.
Okay. I say, I say all this to say that whether this gets resolved in a planning commission meeting, whether this gets resolved in a long-drawn-out legal battle, CityWalk has taken a position that they're not going to go away and that they're either going to operate as some sort of housing facility or offices that provide some sort of service to this population. And we will be limited in our ability to tell them what they can do outside of what's already allowed in our land development code. So I, we need to get creative and come up with a solution that works for everybody. And I think our staff, we need to sit down with CityWalk and see what that looks like. It may not look like an emergency shelter. Maybe they want to be an emergency shelter. I don't know. I think if we sat down at a table, we could come with an agreement to where they can operate in a way that serves the community and their congregation and at the same time, not be just open doors, free-for-all to everybody where people are being bussed in, that's causing concerns in the community. Because we have that emergency shelter at Carney Center, and they will be opening with more capacity. And that did create issues in those areas. We recognize those, and that's where it is. So I think we can mitigate some of those concerns to the community and at the same time, support people who are trying to help people. I do want to thank, I forgot the batting, I want to recognize the veterans that spoke earlier. Thank you for your service to our country. That means a lot. So where this is going, you know, we do need to bring the Big Ben Continuum of Care. We do need them to work, I think, with CityWalk and see if there's a partnership that can be had there. Because I don't think anybody's goal should be to kick people out onto the streets. And unless we're being proactive, and the need is so great right now, it's just not a matter of relocating people who are living at that facilities. Because we know people are living in the woods, not just on Mayhand Drive. They're living in the woods on Gaines Street. They're living in the woods on North Monroe. Earlier today, somebody in my neighborhood posted a picture in a neighborhood group of somebody walking through our neighborhood that came out of the woods, that is living in my neighborhood. It's everywhere, and it's the whole community's problem. Not problem, it's the whole community's responsibility to come up with a solution that works for everybody. I think we can get there. I think we can't get there if we let this turn into, are you for homeless? Are you against homeless? If we're attacking neighborhoods for having fears? Because I think, you know, you can't tell somebody what they're afraid of. Everybody's fear is valid in their own mind. We need to recognize that. Whether we agree with that fear or not, we need to recognize where everybody's coming from and really push for real solutions. So Mr. City Manager, I hope, our goal with new development has always been compliance and that we can meet with CityWalk and try to find a solution to the issue at hand.
Yes, sir. I see that our growth management director is on WebEx. It might be productive to ask her if there is a date that's been set for a follow-on meeting. I believe that discussion has happened while we've got her available. Let me ask her if she has that information.
Yes, thank you, City Manager. We have been asked by Renee Miller to meet and discuss next steps. And we plan to get back with her and probably do that later this week and talk about what allowable uses can go on right now as it's zoned for office residential, and then what their next steps are.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. I appreciate that update. Let's continue this conversation. Let's see where we can get, just sitting at the table and trying to find mutual respect for each other. Maybe that doesn't work out. I don't know. There's other processes that can take place if it doesn't. But I think we at least need to try with that first step. And I'm here to listen to both the neighborhoods who are concerned. I'm here to listen to CityWalk's concern and really find a solution. Because the solution will never be letting hundreds of people chronically homeless sleep on the streets of Tallahassee. I mean, that invites the problems we're having. When we have, you know, people who don't have access to mental health services, you know, that's an issue. When we don't have enough lawyers in our community working with people experiencing homelessness to get social security disability income, that's an issue. That's a barrier to get them relocated into a shelter. When we don't really have a place to send somebody who's being discharged from TMH, who can't care for themselves, if they can't go to the Carney Center. We don't have a respite center for somebody in that position. There are so many gaps in our community that we need to fill. But we need to lead by saying, we're going to put an end to veterans and the chronically homeless people living on the streets in our community. And that's going to take extra resources. It's not a matter of finding them an apartment to live in and walking away. It will be a long, sustained effort, but I think we can do there. I don't think we can do it just as a city. I think we need the county to be involved. We need all the partners at the Big Ben Continuum of Care to be involved. And I think, I've heard a lot of back and forth today between who said what. I don't know. But I do think we all just need to come to the table with the county. They also have federal funds coming down. Big Ben Continuum of Care, I believe, knows what we need to do, and they can provide us very educated direction and instructions. And I think until we get to that table, we're just going to continue to see meetings like that. So I would make a motion, Mr. City Manager, that we schedule a joint meeting, invite the Big Ben Continuum of Care, invite the Leon County Board of County Commissioners, and us to have a joint meeting and come up with solutions for what we're going to do this year to address this crisis.
Motion's been made.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Porter. Let's go into some discussion. Danways Cox, Commissioner, is a representative on Continuum of Care.
Well, I will tell you that, and Abena could be my witness, we had this conversation with Amanda. Amanda doesn't feel that, and I think that there are those at the county that does not feel that a joint meeting is going to solve our issue. We, you know, homelessness existed before CityWalk. But because of CityWalk, you know, being on Mayhand, all of a sudden, all eyes on CityWalk. But we got homelessness, as you said, Commissioner Matlow. We got homelessness all over the place, and it's been here for a very long time. So are we looking to solve a CityWalk issue, or are we looking to solve a homeless issue? Because we had a workshop, was it October, November? We had a workshop where we dealt with, talked about homelessness. Amanda presented at that workshop. The chairman of the Leon County Commissioner, Commission was in attendance. So I'm trying to, I'm just trying to think, you know, what are we, what are we doing? Because we're going to come together and talk, but we really need people out there working. And Amanda has said, they've collected this data. If we could just get the information, then we're having, we're having an informed discussion instead of a discussion just all over the place where we don't know what's working because we don't know what we're dealing with. Now, from the conversation with her, we're talking about less than 800 homeless individuals dealing with homelessness. One is too many, I agree. But we're not talking about 10,000. We're talking about less than 800. So let's put that, put that in the container. Can we not work with and continue to support Big Ben Continuum of Care to try to get permanent housing, more permanent housing for these individuals? And what I've said every time we've talked about this, if there are people out there with units that are available for housing, then please come forward. There is financial assistance to help with that. That's what we need. We need housing. We need to, we don't, we don't need to keep talking about it. We need housing. And so we just need to identify. And Mr. Patel came to a meeting. I've passed that information on to Amanda to reach out to Mr. Patel, some other local developers who've taken some apartment, apartments and redeveloped them into affordable housing. We, and I provided her with that information. She just needs, she and her staff needs time to sift through this. We're hitting the gas because of CityWalk. We need to just hold up, and let's look at this thing holistically and work on wherever homelessness is, whether it's in the woods or in somebody's neighborhood. We need to make people whole wherever they are, not just the ones at CityWalk. But we, we got a solution. They're going to have a meeting tomorrow to work with the individuals who are at CityWalk to make sure they get to the services or have an opportunity to get to the services that they need. So what are we trying to do here? Are we appealing to pressure? Or are we trying to appeal to take care of people? And I hope that we're trying to take care of people. Because pressure is going, if it's not on homelessness, it'll be on something else. But we've got to take care of the people. And so, the roundabout I'm saying is that we need informed solutions. We need information to make the best decision. A bunch of electeds sitting around talking about it. And then when we leave here, we go to the comforts of our own homes. That's not solving the problem. We need real solutions that is data-driven. And Big Ben Continuum of Care can provide us with that comprehensive information if we just give them time.
Have we got the mayor, Pro Tim?
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Williams-Cox. I almost feel like we're singing the same song at a different octave. You know, my objective isn't for us to just go meet with the county and let's all talk about our feelings about it. It's really to have the city manager's office, his staff, get with the county, the county administrator and their staff, the Big Ben Continuum of Care. They're the experts. Identify the solution and bring us solutions. Because what I don't want to see is the solution, us push for it, and the solution come back to a city commission meeting. And the city takes, we're going to commit X amount of dollars to go RFP this many units, et cetera, et cetera, whatever the solution may be. I think the county needs to be an equal partner. And at the county commission meeting last night, many of them expressed interest in a joint meeting. The chairman actually said, maybe there is a way to find some synergy in the funding that's coming through. So I do think we are in a unique moment. And it's not to solve the issue that Mayhand Drive's having, but it's to make progress on the issue that CityWalk has shined a spotlight on across our community. And it's not new, because, I mean, we've all, we've received complaints over time for years. It's not, it's recurring. But the question is, how many resources are we dedicating to address it? And can we get the county on board to commit some resources as well? So I'm not saying, let's go meet tomorrow. But I'm saying if, so this motion would have the city manager contact the county administrator. I would assume he would need board direction as well to be involved with it. If they're willing to go down this route, have the city, county staff, Big Ben Continuum of Care, have meetings internally to prepare for a workshop that has us as partners with the county addressing the homelessness issue. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams-Cox and Commissioner Porter?
On point, Commissioner Matlow. City manager's staff is already on the Big Ben Continuum of Care. Abena is there, Delmas is there, and Ron is there. They're already on board. They're already, they've already been working with Big Ben Continuum of Care before CityWalk to work on the homeless situation. And from the county, the commission chair is also on. And prior to that, I believe Commissioner Dozier was there. So the county is at the table, and so are the surrounding counties, all a part of this 31-member board. They've been dealing with this. And during COVID, they have, they met very, very often. Because when Kearney closed, Kearney closed because we had to get folks out of concrete housing to get them to hotels to prevent the spread of COVID. That's why it closed. Big Ben Continuum of Care, Salvation Army, and other partners were a part of all of that, trying to help with that, and they still are a part of that. So there's a, you take a look on the website, there are a lot of people involved with this. And so the city staff is already there. They were... They were there when I got there. They were already there. And I don't see Mr. Barber in the audience, but Mr. Barber is there and he's an active part of helping to find these solutions. He's been involved in going out there helping with the count and stuff. So city staff is already involved. And I can't speak anymore to what the county is doing, other than the chairman of the county commission is also on the board.
Commissioner Porter.
Well, I just want to be clear that I'm not talking specifically about CityWalk either. We have a general issue that needs to be addressed. Frankly, I'm confused as to why there's so much opposition to the idea if two of your colleagues wanting a workshop, if any of you wanted a workshop, I would, I don't see the harm in having a workshop. I also don't think it's the end-all, be-all. I think we might be having different conversations with different service providers. I would like to get on the same page. I watched the county commission meeting yesterday where they did express interest in having a joint workshop. Personally, I wasn't satisfied with the workshop we had in November or December. We were aware of CityWalk at the time, we should have, I wish we could have avoided the mess we're in now. So, you know, I'm using my judgment and saying, I think we need to do more, I think we need to have more conversations. And of course, I believe in actionable solutions. I think this is why a joint meeting would just be the start.
Point, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor pro, Tim.
I just want to follow up on Commissioner Williams-Cox's point. I hear where you're coming from. I know staff is working on this to the best of their ability. And I'll just look to the city manager, what is your budgetary capacity without board direction to do more? To, if I, if you don't have the authority to go put 280 people in housing, you don't have that budgetary authority. I'm not saying that we'll be able to do that in one year, but there's something we'll be able to do and I would imagine it would exceed what we've already discussed in previous budget conversations and what your authority is to do unilaterally. So if we are going to make more progress than we've been making year by year and pretty much what's expressed in our strategic plan of how many housing units, it will take board action from either the city or the county to get there. Is that correct?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think clearly we've dedicated a lot of resources to this effort as a whole. You as a commissioner, you've pledged more resources this year than we ever have, to the best I can tell. And so we do have considerable rehousing resources in play today. That is certainly happening and a lot of personnel resources dedicated to it. To the extent the commission wanted to change any kind of budgetary process, the commission has to do that. That's not the discretion of the city manager. I will say though, we are anxiously awaiting the strategic plan from the COC. We believe that a comprehensive holistic plan that puts all the pieces together to say where, there may be areas I think that we are doing well in. In fact, I think that will be the outcome. There may be other areas in the continuum of housing, whether it's homeless prevention, whether it's emergency sheltering, transitional facilities, permanent supportive housing, that there are weaknesses in regionally and locally. And I think that is imperative that we're armed with that information to make that decision. So I, to me, that is, that's a critical piece of information and the time of discussion should be coordinated with that. And if I could say also, clearly, I can't act on behalf of the county commission. That would be a direction of the county commission and the county administrator if they chose to meet.
Right, yeah. The motion would include just to contact the county administrator and see if they are willing. But on that topic of strategic planning, I take two issues with it. One is that we've been taking actions. Shelters were demolished at Lake Ella, anti-homeless, infrastructure was placed on benches. That's an action that was outside of a strategic plan. There have been clearings in the woods that are outside of a strategic plan. So it's not as if we haven't taken any action and we're just, our hands are tied waiting for a strategic plan. We are taking action, it's just what type of action do we need to play? But I also want to, many public speakers and it's been said in the media, that we're in a crisis situation. And it's, if we got hit by a hurricane and we're in a crisis, we want to wait for a strategic plan to figure out how to solve it. I do think a strategic plan is a good solution for the long term, but that doesn't play into what funding can be made available now and how we can have a meaningful impact now in this year. And I do think we should look to our partners. The Carney Center has requested, is looking for more funding and more opportunities to help. Other entities are looking for more opportunity to help. I think the requests are there and those requests will result and will result. So let strategic plan and look at the long term, but let's see what we can do now. And I think if the city, county and Big Ben Continuum of Care's staff got together, they'd be able to come up with some reasonable recommendations that we can do in the short term to, one, show the community that homelessness is a serious issue to our elected bodies. We do want to take action and we're going to make some additional meaningful steps in addition to what we've ever done previously to address this right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson, you want to be recognized?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am very confident in our representation on the Big Ben Continuum of Care. We asked Commissioner Williams-Cox to serve and be our point person with that organization and I think she has done a phenomenal job. She's brought us information, she's represented us well. I think a meeting of the city and county commissions wouldn't get us any farther than where we are today. Just a back and forth among politicians sitting around a table. But we have an organization. We have the Big Ben Continuum of Care, we have the Homeless Coalition, organizations that are working with these individuals on a day-to-day basis. They know what their needs are. And it's not just housing. Commissioner Matlow, it's not just housing. Many of these individuals have mental health issues, they have health issues, they're unemployed. There are lots of factors that go into making a person homeless. I even talked with Mr. Barber, he said there are some that want to be where they are, living in the woods because they don't want structure. And so it's not going to be us throwing money at a problem. Money is not going to solve a problem. This has to be a comprehensive issue. It has to involve all of our partners and we have lead agencies and organizations already established to do that. And so for us to come together as a city and county commission, just to get to where we are and do what we've done today, I don't see how that gets us any farther down the road. And so I suggest that we let those organizations that do this on a daily basis, this is their mission to serve those who are homeless in our community. Let them tell us what the needs are and how we can best address those needs in a comprehensive fashion. The city can't do it alone, the county can't do it alone, and there has been a lot done. I don't want anyone to leave here thinking that there has not been a lot done in this community to address the issue of homelessness. If you were here when the homeless shelter was in the Frenchtown community, we saw what that facility looked like, what it did to that community, how the people who even lived there were underserved. And we have the Carney Center now where there are comprehensive services being provided. We have Westgate, we have transitional housing for the homeless. There's been a lot done in this community to address the homeless issue in Tallahassee, probably more than you would find in most cities now. I really believe that because of the services that we provide, we are getting homeless that are being sent to Tallahassee and that's what's causing, I really believe this, maybe the numbers don't bear it out, but that's what's causing the increase in our homeless population in Tallahassee. So for us to sit here and pontificate about what the answers are and how quickly we want to see action taken, that's not going to get it done. I really believe we turn this over to those people who are working with this population and all of us are concerned. I hate to hear anybody say that, I mean, I can't imagine, I hope that there are not people who serve this community that are so heartless that they don't care about the least of these in our community. I'm a man of faith. I take my faith very seriously and I practice my faith every single day of the week, not just on Sunday. And that is to be concerned about the least of these and I try to do that in every way that I possibly can, not just on this dais, but at food distributions, serving the homeless by volunteering at the shelter and making donations to the Hope Community. That's what it's about. And so I don't think here today we need to go forward with another meeting. We simply, we already have a structure in place to address these issues and to move us forward and that's what I support. And so, Mr. Mayor, I am, like I said, I fully support Commissioner Williams-Cox as our representative on the Big Ben Continuum of Care and suggest that we allow our partners the opportunity to come together and let us know through our representatives on that organization what it is we can do, how we can best do it and when we can do it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Commissioner Porter, last comments. Did you have your hand up before we vote?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say that, to be clear, I mean, what you're describing, Commissioner Richardson, is what I envisioned this workshop to be. Hearing from our providers, that I speak to people in the trenches every single week. I would not be suggesting this without consulting with them first or believing that they thought this would be helpful to them, which I do think it would be. I also find it a little, I mean, politicians talking at meetings, that's what we do all the time and it's not just an exercise in futility or ego. It is because we are elected to propose policy solutions. And I do want to see action and I do believe we have done a lot. But I understand where others are coming from and I know that individually we will continue to work on these issues. As you know, it's, we don't always have the time to talk about these issues and because of Sunshine, workshops are a precious resource to hear from all stakeholders. But if that's not the will of the body, then, you know, thank you.
Appreciate your comments. You know, I'm going to go ahead and state my piece as well. I'm going to vote respectfully against the motion on the table as well, although I do agree with you, there is a time for us to come together. But I strongly believe, as Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Williams-Cox said, we have got to give the experts at the Continuum of Care the opportunity to finish the strategic plan and to formally bring it back so we know specifically how we're moving forward. Now, that is not to say, we have open lines of communication through Commissioner Williams-Cox and through Abena with the Continuum of Care on a daily basis. If there are emergency needs that they bring formally to the attention of the city, I know that we will respond. And I know that we're all on the same page with that. We all want to do the best that we possibly can for this community. These are difficult issues. We don't have all the answers right now and that can be frustrating, but I'm encouraged by this heartfelt debate from each one of us, really passionately want to move this community forward. With that, the motion is made on the table by Commissioner Matlow, signed by Commissioner Porter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails on a two to three vote with Commissioner Williams-Cox, Commissioner Richardson and Mayor Daley in dissent, Commissioner Williams-Cox, before we close out the meeting.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I would agree to a joint meeting once we have
Correct.
Information
Correct.
That we can use to meet on and help, have Amanda and whoever to come and provide that information to us. And then we're working with data. I had this conversation again with her Monday. Data is my middle name. I need data to make decisions. Either I can see it or I need somebody to collect it and bring it to me. And she's not our staff, she's doing her job, she's going to bring us the data that we can then make some decisions about how we can support what is needed. I think in a previous meeting, we, it was said that we have provided $3.8 million towards fixing this situation, homeless situation. And on Monday, it was said that she still has some of those resources. So I don't know what else we can do without having her provide us with something to drive with. Yes, we need more housing, we know that. But other than that, I don't know what else we can do until she provides us with information on what her data reflects.
Good point. That's a good point to end on. I think we've had a wonderful meeting tonight, a very good discussion here at the end. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.